Okay, at six o'clock, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Make a note that Heidi is not here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
Still moved.
Second. There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard six zero. The MSBA Board Report, Elizabeth, please.
Welcome to the February edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the governor's State of the State address last month. On January 24th, Governor Parson delivered his annual State of the State address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Putting people first was the theme of Governor Parson's address. His annual speech to the state legislature marks his final one as Missouri's 57th governor. Education was once again a focus. During his speech, the governor detailed the progress his administration has made in education funding, teacher pay, and workforce development.
And this year, as we propose our final priorities as governor, there is no turning back. We know that guaranteeing Missouri's strong foundation starts with a quality education in our children. This year, we will once again fully fund the K through 12 Foundation Formula with an additional $120 million over last year's level, and we will also fully fund transportation across the state of Missouri.
In addition to fully funding the Education Foundation Formula, the governor also wants a $4 million increase in state funding to boost teacher pay.
This year, to do our part on teacher pay, we are including funding to increase teacher pay baseline, to increase teacher baseline pay to $40,000 per year. This represents a $15,000 increase for teacher pay during our administration.
There are many other issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of great interest to MSBA and school board members throughout the state. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on the developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts and periodic webinars. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. Don't miss your chance to visit your legislator at the Capitol during MSBA's Advocacy Day. Known formerly as Legislative Forum, Advocacy Day is scheduled for April 9th in Jefferson City. The event will be preceded by a spring virtual meeting on March 13th and lunch and learn sessions on Fridays to provide legislative updates on the issues that matter to you. Check the MSBA website for registration information for all of these events. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March, as proclaimed by Governor Parson. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. Visit the MSBA website for ideas to celebrate and materials created to help recognize the important contributions of these men and women and focus attention on the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. On January 29th, a webinar co-presented by the Missouri School Boards Association, the Missouri Association of Counties, and the Missouri Municipal League was held to educate attendees on the challenges posed by artificial intelligence and how it might impact local elections. Speakers discussed how AI tools, specifically deep fakes, are being used to shape public opinion and impact the democratic process. MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall said that although misinformation in elections isn't new, AI takes it to another level.
We do have some concerns, like you, with our candidates being subjected to some misinformation and disinformation that's generated by AI. Now, that's not something new. We all know, sitting at this table, there has been a lot of disinformation, especially in recent years, that's been circulated to impact elections, especially local elections. But AI is going to take that to another level, as you both have already reflected on, and it's going to impact school boards, just like it is both of your memberships. And so, again, emphasizes the importance of us working together to educate our communities about what is a deep fake? What is, how can you do a better job of identifying misinformation and disinformation, whether or not it's generated by AI? We ought to all be tethered to the truth instead of trying to be influenced by stuff that isn't accurate or isn't factual.
The webinar also featured presentations that provided an introduction to AI, a cybersecurity overview, and legal considerations. To view the archived recording of this webinar, visit the AI Resources page on the MSBA website. And finally, John McDonald's Center for Education Safety Team will host a two-day Behavioral Risk Assessment Summit for K-12 school threat management on March 6th and 7th in Columbia. This is an amazing opportunity for individuals and school leadership teams to learn from the leading experts in school safety.
I've supported the response and recovery of seven school shootings in my career, and I can't emphasize enough the importance of this summit. Our schools continue to see an increase in threats and alarming rate. Classroom behaviors continue to challenge the learning environment. We can change this trend. We can fix these issues. From prevention to behavior risk assessment, from threat management to understanding the current trends in school violence, this conference will give you the tools to help make a difference in your community.
If your school team has yet to receive basic behavioral risk assessment training, a free pre-conference training day will be available on March 5th. Visit the MSBA website for more details. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in March for the next MSBA Board Report.
Does anybody want to say anything about the MSBA Board Report?
Paying your bills on time raises your credit score, right? Wrong. In fact-
Is there any update-
-your credit score lies. You're being told by the big-
We're having issues with the Facebook lives.
For any of these three lies, and it doesn't matter what you do. It takes 7:20 in the morning.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to get there.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Paul.
Is there any updates on the revision to the state formula, or do we think this will end up not, do we think that we'll end up not making much progress this legislative session?
Yeah, I do, I do not anticipate the state formula to do any kind of overhaul, really, light or heavy. But they're, every two years it's recalculated, so there, there is some changes that do benefit the district. The free produce lunch threshold goes down, which will create more, in a sense, fake kids for us, because we get the add-on when we get to those levels. So that, and also the state adequacy target is going to go up too. Now, we don't know exactly how much it's going to go up, so the formula starts with the amount of money you're going to get per ADA. That state adequacy target is going to go up. But, you know, we heard the governor say that, you know, the governor doesn't get to, he talks about his priorities, but then it's got to go through the legislative process to actually create the, the funding bill for education every other state agency too. So, I guess, as always, long answer, no overhaul to the formula, but will the formula have a benefit to us and all districts in Missouri? It will. It's projected to in FY '25.
Can I ask, because I commend him for, you know, increasing or trying to increase the base pay of teachers across the state, but that in no way benefits this district, which has tough competition to the east of us.
That's, that's right, and also to that is, the way that the, that the teacher base grant came out for FY '24, the current fiscal year, it was outside of the formula. It was just a grant outside the formula, and not even a grant that would potentially happen every year. So, yeah, and that's kind of combining the two issues we're talking about.
I was in Jeff City on Tuesday with retired teachers, and they had a panel of legislators, and they all talked about being, being proud of fully funding the formula, and that there needs to be a revision, but they gave no indication that it was going to happen in the near future.
I'm certain, there was probably a bill filed, but there's not been a bill to make to committee, and nothing with any traction that any of our, our organizations are tracking.
Anything else on the MSBA Board Report? I would just add to it on that AI conversation they're having. I know that in industry, assuming bowling, and especially with what you do, that AI is a, is a good tool, but also can be used as a, you know, as a not-so-good tool. So we just need to be aware as a school district going forward on some of this stuff and see how it can benefit education. So, I think that's something that we need to just keep a pulse on. Public comments, did someone sign up?
We did, we had one.
Paul Cross? Yes. So what's your agenda item?
My agenda item is on the new high school bill.
Okay, go.
My name's Fred Ross, if you those who know me, I've been a teacher educator and coach in the district for over 20 years. I approached you tonight and found out, we started doing the building, coaches had a lot of input, we're trying to set up the track and field facility for, will be very prompt, prompt for for our students. We got the board docs the other day, and some different things were proposed, and have been put together and already been in place, that we really didn't have any input other than that very first meeting. I guess things got shoved through and pushed through, and as coaches, we're looking at some of the things that are done that, right now, we want people to host a home track meet. They only have one pit, it's a double-ended pit, which was something we didn't want. It's obsolete now. They moved some different things that we had planned on certain ends. As a coaching staff, we have three, generally speaking, as a track coach, you have jumps coach, you have a running coach, and you have a pitch coach or one of those other coaches. When you start separating these things, you're oftentimes not going to be able to coach your kids in those areas, and it's hard for those kids to get from those areas. We also noticed the placement of some of these events are really next to the track. The triple jump, long jump, the one single pit they got is probably a foot and a half away from the track rim, and when you practice these things, as a track coach, you run through the pit onto the track. So we wouldn't be able to do those activities at the same time of what's going on. That's kind of the reason why we wanted to put the high jump and pole vault on the same end, because you can run those two together, and if you have two pits inside the track, you can also run long jump and triple jump at the same time. Easier for the coaches, easier for the kids, and easier for, make our facility much more better for other districts. As I said, right now, we host three or four meets, I'm sorry, five to six meets every year in our high school. Since we got this new track, we've been proud, we support those type of things. We've hosted numerous EMO conference meets, numerous district meets. We wouldn't be able to hold any of these, of these new facilities if they stand the way they are. That's, that's, that's against our kids. That's not good for our kids to have it that way. And I just want to make it a board that everybody, no about this, and we, like I said, we just found out when we looked at the pictures when the board docs came out. You know, as a coach, I feel a little bit slighted that, hey, we gave input to beginning, wouldn't you check with us with all this experience? And we went, 75 years of track experience on our, on our team. I think that's something that probably could have been looked at and maybe fixed some of these things before it went through. And that includes our assistant superintendent, who's a former track coach. I mean, he noticed immediately the same way, that he can't host a meet with this. So I don't know what they're going to do, and I don't know if it's too late. I think they could still remove one of the pits and one of the foundations for the pole vault, move to the other end, and keep that runway, and with minimal change, get set up the proper way for our kids. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, high school presentation.
Well, everyone, this is the robotics team, I'm Mr. Trump, I teach at the high school.
Everybody has a robotics, they're ready to roll. We're having this presentation right now, here we go.
I'm Mr. Trump, I teach at the high school, and then I'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Chase Gerber.
Oh, okay. I'm Carly Gruber.
And I'm Theories.
We make up the robotics team currently, there's a couple other members who are currently present with us, but I'm a coder, Theory's a builder, and-
I'm also a builder.
Chase is also a builder, so.
Do you want to talk about the robot? Or do you want me to talk about the robot?
You're welcome.
This is a robot named Sparkling, currently have it presented in the blue alliance side with the blue drone and the green lines hunters. They're able to pick up pixels, about eight in a match, which is, I'm not sure if you guys would know, that's pretty high. A lot of other teams were only able to do two or three in a match, a lot of the teams that we saw. We are able to climb at the end of the match. Our robot has a more unique arm design that comes all the way over the back to place pixels, which are these little hexagonal discs. They fit inside the claw here, and it can close, which allows us, if it was powered, to hold them. The robot uses mechan wheels to drive around, which allows it to straight and, you know, do your normal forward backward, but also able to do diagonals, and can rotate. That's, that's about the limit of our, of our technical capabilities on the robot.
During the matches, we have a period of time called autonomous, it's a 30-second period where the robot moves on its own, essentially coded by me and Steve, and so it usually-
Me and Steve. And so, it usually means Steve, and so it's there.
It recognizes this team prop right here. We have a red and a blue.
It recognizes this team prop right here. We have a red and a blue.
If you feel you didn't want to repeat anything, that we want to hear. I know you got shaken up a little there. We're testing you. Put your stress under this.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
So the blue prop is what the robot recognizes with this camera right here. Depending on where the team prop is placed, it can be placed, there's usually tape here during matches, so there's a spot right here, here, and right here. We have it set up for there, but currently we cannot do autonomous due to our servo not working. We're working on that. The, it'll come forward and turn to this one, and then it'll turn back, move backward, and turn around 90 degrees and straight, well, not straight, but go forward until about right here, and then it'll straight this way, and go forward until it recognizes that it sees the backboard right here, and then it'll place depending upon where the team prop is. So, would usually look something like that, but on a bigger scale. Do you have anything you want to say about Talia?
About Talia? Our Talia performance is quite quick. I can initialize it here and show you. We just, you can just use a controller you find online, and it can straight, and you can turn, and raise your arm up, and it can go back and forth. But that's great. Oops. It's kind of working now. Oh, dang. I heard it kick back in, so something jostled this.
You want me to push it down?
Sorry, no, thank you. In normal match play, this would be able to pick up pixels, and then when you go over, it would-
Drop pool?
Yes. So it would go over and drop. I'm not sure why it's doing that. I'm going to stop that because it breaks it.
Don't want to break it, even though it is.
There were some videos online, our previous competition was streamed, I'm not sure if we're allowed to go up there and show it, but we did give that as presentation material, so I would assume no. Our previous competition, we made it to semifinals, finals, and state.
We were team captain.
We were team captain number one of the entire North St. Louis League. That's what this hat signifies, and we have a trophy back in our robotics room at the high school. This robot has taken us quite far. We weren't even expected to make it to finals this year.
Yeah, exceeded all expectations.
Yeah, we've made it very far. I was on the drive team, and Carly was also on the drive team. I was the main driver, she was our coach.
I was your human player.
You were a human player for some of the matches. Carly's sister, Jo, was a human player for some of the matches. Unfortunately, Jo's sick today, so they weren't able to overcome. We have, we have accomplished many things this year that we didn't think we would be able to, and especially even in the school that we currently have, with how small it is. We are hoping to get a, a larger group at the new school that will help us to further our robotic expertise.
It's funny, you mentioned that we were just talking about rooms at the new high school today, and trying to figure out where we can, you know, shuffle all of our classes and where robotics will fit into that too. The room they have right now, they share with a record store, right?
Yes.
It is a little bit tight, it's a little bit cramped for them right now, but that, despite that, they've made tremendous progress. I watched it last year and then into this year. It's a lot of time and effort, you know, they're right across the hall from my office, and there's times I'm leaving and they're still there working. So, all the things they've accomplished and still have out there to accomplish, it's based on hard work and nothing else. And I see that every day.
It is a lot of hard work. We've put a lot of hours at the school, and even out of the school, me and my grandpa take the robot home over to his house, he has a ton of tools, and we bring some materials from the shop and then work on it, and bring them back next week, and we see what we've accomplished, what we need to work on still, and the cycle repeats. We'll do stuff throughout the week by ourselves, and then at the meets, we get input from them on things, we can change things, we can do. And I give input too, since I'm involved with the drive team, I, I have a lot of need to express input, because small changes like the weight distribution can change how it feels to drive entirely, or the way that the servos move, how fast they are, how slow they are, all of that can impact how well we perform in competition. So it takes a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort from everybody in the team and everybody outside of the team to improve our work. Absolutely. Our sponsors have made a, a very, very large contribution to our team. We're incredibly thankful for them.
They have a presentation here too, but in the interest of time, I think you guys can look through those slides if you want to, which are leisure, but I'd open up for questions now for the robotics.
I'm curious if you all knew how to code and build before you joined the team? Did you have previous experiences?
I knew how to build previously, but I did not know how to code. I was on a First Lego League team, and now I'm on a First Tech Challenge team. And I have, I used to do a little bit of coding in First Lego League, but it's quite a bit different. It's a lot more simple and dumbed-down for, you know, like eight-year-olds and six-year-olds.
Sure.
But with this, we're programming with Java blocks, which is sort of in-between Java and First Lego League. It's not text-based, it's object-oriented, so you place blocks into places where you need them, but it's also very complex. It can get very complex. I don't know if we have any pictures, we have a slide in here with a picture of our programming?
Yeah.
I don't remember which page it was on, it's pretty far down in there.
It's called Programming Highlights.
Yeah. But it can get, it can get quite complex. Page after this. Yeah, so that stuff, so that's some of what our programming looks like. It's changed a bit since we made this presentation, we'll have to update it for our state competition on March 2nd, but it, it could get a lot more complex than that even.
Yeah, that's, that's really early on code that we have. We just had like a couple breakthroughs, and we wanted to show them to the state, well, not state, regional judges, so. My experience, I came in freshman year knowing nothing. So, a lot I had to like, to learn by myself, but Steve, he like goes home and learns everything he can about like, all of this. So Steve's been like a great mentor to me, and he's teaching, like, he's taught me everything I know about coding so far.
I joined around freshman year. I did know a little bit about building and putting things together, because I'd take apart and put it back together, model trains and building kits and all that fun stuff. So I knew a little bit about putting stuff together, making some of it work, and like how to wire it up.
Very nice. Wow, you guys, you guys have a great presentation, this is so interesting.
Thank you.
Who created the drawings in CAD?
The drawings in CAD. Steve helped with a lot of that. He did most of the paper drawings. Me and Carly had done a few hand drawings to just express ideas, they weren't ever dimensioned or anything.
Very serious.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't very put-together drawings, they weren't fleshed-out ideas, they were just, you know, what if we did this? And then we drew it out on paper to see if it worked. And I know Chase has done some of that, Chase, you've done some of CADing too, but Steve has done a lot of it to help with our team.
It's a great skill to learn in life.
It is a good skill.
Where did the name 5108 come from?
5108 was our team number assigned by First. Our team name though is Amish Electricians.
Yep, that, they all clearly know the gym.
I don't know if you guys were here when Andrew Schwartz worked at the school, but he was the mentor, I believe, when it first came about, and so it was named based off like a student's inside joke about how he looked Amish, and he was part of the robotics team.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, oh, go ahead.
Oh, how, like, is this a, like a competition season, or do you guys start at the beginning of the year, or is it like, it kicks off in January? What does that look like?
It kind of kicks off in September, and it goes like all the way through March.
April? So it's basically the entire school year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it, it starts at the beginning of the school year, ends at the end of the school year, and then starts back up again every school year, it's like, it's do like that. It starts in September, like Carly said, and ends April. Though, April competitions are for people who advance to internationals, and that's, that's like great, that I don't know if we'll make it, but that would be really cool.
Well, thank you, this is amazing.
Thank you guys all for being here today.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, and good luck in state. So, I want to add one thing. There is a gentleman I work with named Todd Stewart, who is coaching a robotics team in your, in your competition area. So just if you see a guy named Todd Stewart come up, you know you have to be there. I'm not here to work forever.
Do you have a team he works for?
Pardon me?
Do you have a team he's on?
I'll have to figure it out. But, but he and I were talking about this, and, and he said, oh yeah, he coaches the team, and so there are, you know, there are other, you know, teams out there, so, good luck.
Thank you. Good luck to Todd's team as well.
Except when they show up against you guys.
No, no, that's gracious professionalism.
To want to have a fun competition, you don't always want to land. I did.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We have two awesome volunteer awards that we want to give out, and an distinguished alumni. Our first outstanding volunteer award is going to go to Jill Knopkamp. Jill has been with the Band Booster since 2012, she's been the president, the vice president, the secretary, the treasurer, the program manager. Is there anything else in that?
No.
But, you know, selfless service to the Band Boosters over a long time, and we really appreciate all you've done for that group and all the time and effort you put in. So we have a 100th anniversary, it's the high school coin, and this award.
Thank you.
And we also have another volunteer award that we're giving out to Sunrise Church. Pam Hambach, one of our special education teachers, works with this organization, this church directly, and I'm going to have her share a little bit about what they do.
So we have a food pantry at the high school for you, those of you that don't know, and I mean, this church and these group of people, obviously there's way more than just them, have single-handedly stocked this pantry for, I don't even know how many years now, and I apologize for that, but, I mean, they bring us literally car loads, the entire car full of snacks, food, snacks for the kids, hygiene items, stuff that we send home with kids that need, you know, actual food to take home. Anytime I email them, they are there. Anytime I email them, they are there and I just can't thank you enough. The kids made this sign for you. Some of the many kids that get snacks signed this, but not everyone got to sign it. But trust me, I always let them know where the food comes from, that you guys are donating it and we could not do the service without you guys. Thank you so much.
I believe the group, the name of the group is Food for Hope.
Sorry, yes.
He's an I C O.
Sure. I don't know. I know you got a nice plaque. Maybe dial.
There we go. No, you're in there.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you guys so much. Thank you guys.
The last part of our presentation is our distinguished alumni. We're in the third year, sixth honoree, I think, that we have now at this time. Our distinguished alumni is the 1974 alumnus. His name is Ben Corbett. Ben, if you could come forward. Ben has had a 30-year career in the music industry. He has played drums for The Temptations, The Four Tops, recording, traveling, touring. I'm sure the stories that you have, we could be here a long time and share one of those stories. He currently resides in Ensbroke and he just told me, too, that he's got a little archery background. He's trying to get me to start some archery here maybe, so that may be a thing in our future. But a great career that you've had and we are proud to honor you as an distinguished alumni. Thank you. And this award. Thank you. Thanks so much for being here.
Hey, Matt. Awesome job.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming.
Okay, moving on. Dr. Berger, new Wright City High School and East addition updates?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was looking one below that. Yes. Let's see. We'll start with Eric, if I can come up with your name, Eric. Yeah, let's go to the high school first. Sorry, we'll do the presentation first.
High school if you want. You can do it or Bobby.
Whichever. You guys figure it out. Yeah. I guess if it's Bobby's presentation, isn't I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can do it.
I'm backwards here. Yes.
Sir, how's everybody doing today?
Good.
So last time I was here, about three weeks ago, we were just kind of coming off that deep freeze. Up until, I guess, potentially tomorrow, the weather's been fairly good for us the last few weeks, so very productive set onsite when that happens. Right now, we're currently working on the football field, getting that up to grade, getting it ready for turf. We've got site utilities ongoing. Really where we're at right now, we're about two to three weeks away from hopefully having the east side of the creek wrapped up. That's the way we're working right now. Interior building slab placements, we're pouring areas of, like the cafeteria area, G. Pour two slabs on that today. We've got two more pours in there next week. Underground M E T works pretty much done, other than specific areas in that location. Masonry's ongoing. Retaining walls are kind of at a standstill till later this spring. Trust installation's about wrapped up. Everything's separate area, G, I should say. Spray insulation's ongoing, so everything below the deck, just roughly 12 inches of spray foam there that works continuing on every day. We've got roof sheeting continuing, shingles and TPO roofing following that activity. And then interior framing's ongoing, also a little bit of drywall work mixed in. Kind of where we're going, looking forward, it's a grading excavation of the east side of the property. Again, we got some utilities to put in. We got a couple of weeks of grading left on that side of the creek. Brick veneers ongoing, so basically the far east side of the building, area A, is pretty much done. As high as we go, there's a couple of areas that are what we call scaffold high, then they build up off that and top it out. So it's starting to look like a finished building in some areas, pretty neat to see. Interior masonry's ongoing. For the most part, we're caught up, we're kind of using areas specifically for fallback work for cold days, weather days, that type of thing. Mainly those are like the alcoves going into the classrooms. For the most part, we're caught up there. Interior framing's ongoing, just chasing the sheeting and subsealing as far as we can. Glass and glazing's getting ready to start here in the next couple of weeks. And architectural sheet metal's about two, three weeks out starting as well. What you're looking at here is the bird's eye view of the football field, the track. It's coming along nicely. We're about three weeks away from starting the turf. So as we start the turf, it's really going to, you know, show the true colors of what it's going to look like. So really close to that process. This is the long and triple jump here. It's on the south D-zone area bordering the track. Got the sidewalks around the track that make up the outer edge of the asphalt, so that just got down last week. Bird's eye view of the storm shelters, we have the roofing in progress. I believe the roofers probably just left. They were there when I left about an hour ago. It's a pretty complicated process, really not a complicated process, but a tedious process where you have sound decking, where you have to stuff it with insulation. The insulation can't get wet, so you have to tape certain seams and then you've got to make sure you can cover that up in time before weather comes in like tonight will or early in the morning. So that's, rest assured, it's protected and done right, but that's in motion.
So does the dew impact that at all?
Not necessarily. Austin, it's really more of a heavy rainfall that would get down into those channels.
So you're not worried about the dew and frost?
No, no, sir. Next slide, please. This is brick veneer at the front entrance. So as of today, all that's topped out. On the left side, on the right side, it's all the way up and they've rounded the creek and working their way east on that south elevation. This is the cafeteria and kitchen area. So we've got, let's see if I can get my bearings here. So this area is, I'm sorry, these two areas are poured currently. This area is prepped for a pour. The kitchen itself's ready to go, so all this will be poured out within a week next week. And we're down to basically this corridor and then a little stretch kind of going towards area F is the last slab on grade area to get down. What you're looking at here is the west elevation from a bird's eye view. Again, you're looking at the clear story here in the front main entrance of the building. Then in front of that, you'll have the free standing canopy at the very end of the project, be one of the last things we do. South elevation. This is southeast and north and east. Questions or comments?
I want to address the concern from Coach Ross. This was brought to my attention this week from one of the track coaches also. Is now the time to fix that before we get any further or how are we going to address some of these concerns?
We would have to move quickly. So the area inside the D-zone, if we're going to keep the design that's there, you can't, you cannot fit an additional triple jump within that footprint. We are looking at options to put it near the soccer field, kind of running south to north. We had a meeting on that today and thinking on a cost proposal to come over for that so I can get that in front of the team. To go back in and tear out what's there, there are substantial costs associated with that. Right now, all the drainage is tied to it. It can be done, but it is costly to do that.
I'm concerned that we won't be able to forest any track needs. That concerns me for our kids. So just wondering, who has an idea of how to fix this?
Yeah, it could be done. So really, would it be possible to go back to the overhead view? So this is your long triple jump here and there's a sand pit at each end. We had talked about this in the meeting today. Sometimes, and I don't know the initial rules and have never been at track, you know, maybe you could throw a shot put or something. But when we talked about this, they, in the past, have done multiple tracks or I guess multiple triple jumps where you have a sandbox on one end and you can kind of alternate the sandboxes, you know, from each other, sort of adjacent from each other. That would be an option. Where we're at right now, we've got drainage tied to all these that are tied to the perimeter drain system around the building. You could do it and disconnect it, but it would be significant digging in and bringing all those rock layers back up the west. I'm sorry. To answer your question, the short answer is yeah. We would have to know now. We'd have to get the cost approved and we would have to be able to do that work before we start building the turf.
So it'd be a change order?
It would be, yes, ma'am.
And that'd be a big change order?
I think it would be pretty substantial. The rough order, range of magnitude on the, on putting it outside of the footprint of the track is roughly $60,000. So to do that inside the track, depending on the configuration, you've got that cost plus you have the demolition and tie-in and all the rockwork associated. Again, I don't want to be held to this number, but it's certainly north of $100,000.
Does that include, you said, putting it near the soccer field? Where, can you show me like where?
So this is the south end of the D-zone. You've got your practice soccer field just off to the south. The idea would be to run it on this side, I guess it would be the east side from north to, north to south. So it would run in parallel with the soccer field zone.
And what, what kind of cost?
We got the cost back today. It's roughly $60,000.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure what number you were talking about. Okay.
So I think, you know, this issue's relatively new. I think we owe it to our superintendent to let him have additional conversations with Bobby and the architects and let them kind of iterate over what needs to happen here in order to resolve this. So so that they can, you know, brainstorm a little bit. And once that occurs, you know, then next month, let them come back to us and say, you know, based upon all the brainstorming that we did, here's, here are our options and here's what we think we can do. I think that's where this needs to go. We're not going to solve it tonight.
Absolutely.
So why don't we let Chris, you know, work with who he needs to work with and let him, let him figure it out.
On top of that, I want to know why in the world the comments and inputs from our coaches were not incorporated to this. While Bobby was going to do his presentation, I just pulled up about 10 other schools and I was seeing that one of them were designed like this, including the new corporate farm one.
I think it ends, from my perspective, with what Mr. Jones said, but let me also say, and really, I'm not prepared to talk about this, this is a new issue. And it came out of public comment. Now, I was aware of it this week, this week. So if we go back in time, we remember that we didn't have enough money to do everything we wanted to do. If we went to every department that we got feedback from, every department, we would have scope crew, I assure you. So I want to just, my last word on this topic, unless, you know, the board fiddles compelled to take this further, is that we have to live within our means and it doesn't mean that we don't run this number down, which we are already, we put that motion. We get, we have the locker room this year, you know, whatever it is, we run that number down because we want the number. We want to know what that is. But if you go back in time, you've got to remember, we didn't have enough to meet all of our alternates. We're building a new facility without a gymnasium and we all understand that. We also know that, before that, we sacrificed four rooms, classrooms, regular end classrooms. So while this need is coming and I respect that, I fielded it and I think, like I said, I think your thoughts on it were probably spot on. We'll field this like we do as we see the priorities come along. We'll see if this is the board's priority, but now I'm not, I'm not prepared to, I've already spoken too much on it, really. I'm just not prepared to speak anymore about it.
Okay, any other questions to Bobby regarding the high school? I think last month you brought up an issue with some delay in deliveries and stuff. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, that was on the main switchgear. So we received an update Monday or Tuesday this week. The good news is it hasn't worsened. The bad news is it has improved. We're still looking at the switchgear deliverator shipping, I should say, on 3/19. So March 19th, that'll ship. We hopefully will see that onsite by April 1st and then our target is to have permanent power by the end of April.
If you could do me a favor, just like, so I don't have to ask a question again next month?
Sure.
If you could just put that in your presentation that says, here's the update of the switch or whatever, then that way, then we'll just know, if you don't mind, I would appreciate that.
Sure, absolutely. One other comment, just going back to this. So the numbers we received today, I haven't even had time to review them. Again, this was a fresh topic. We put a meeting together today. We did get a number late this afternoon. I opened it, saw the lump sum number and that's it. So I need to dive into that as well, but that is a number being tossed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next topic is east. Dr. Berger?
Now, maybe, Grant and I know we don't have a presentation, but perhaps Bond and Grant and Bill. There's been a lot of work done this week. I've seen a gazillion emails and I know we're making progress this week.
We are. So Grant's here with Aspire, so he's going to give you an update on just what's happened so far. They are in the building, using it. There's been a few things that have been done and I'll let Grant go through that. We plan to go out potentially with engineers, actually I think our electrical went today, to verify things on the punch list that have been completed. We know that a few things outstanding that'll, that'll take a few weeks or months, like landscaping issue. But the other things, we're going to go check on and stuff like that. So I'll let Grant go through that.
Dr. Berger, I sent you an email, a few ways I sent you an email this afternoon, just kind of highlighting what we had left, but really down to four things and I have to apologize that when I did that email, I was going through the punch list and there was one item that wasn't on the punch list that has creeped up, that it needs to be added to that list. But basically, we're down to really, it's really five things. I think number one, I'll pull the email up, was the footprint. That was always one. So actually, so just updating on that. I met with the company that did the ceiling and the concrete and he basically pointed out to me and I, really looking at it for the first time in depth, that it is actually an indentation into the concrete. So he went out there today and he attempted to fix it. I'm going to look to see what he did and how that fix went today. I had the concrete company scheduled to be there Saturday to repair it. I think we communicated that to you guys, that if this repair doesn't, doesn't meet the requirements it needs to meet, they'll be there Saturday to make a final repair on that. There was some additional storm shelter signage that's in the existing building that has been on order. That's scheduled to arrive at our, our facility on February 26th. We'll promptly schedule to install that signage the next day or two to get that done. And that's just a simple, it's just double-sided tape, so it's just a, take a 15-minute install process. The landscaping slash rut that we've talked about that needs to get fixed, as soon as we get, you know, some duration of dry time, you know, probably March, April, we'll get that resolved. I believe the...
Sink.
The sink, yes. The sink is probably, is probably the biggest one. Thank you for reminding me. You're pulling away though, yeah. We've gone riding around that darn thing and, you know, this today, I think they had gotten some parts. They thought we're going to fix it. You know, we, this is probably the fourth, third or fourth iteration of, okay, we think we know the problem. This is the plumbing company, this is wholesale plumbing, this is Bradley. It's a Bradley sink, so that's the brand of sink. They've all been involved. They've all looked at it and said, okay, this is what you've got to do to get this to work. And no, we got that part out there, you know, we can install that part. No, that's not it, you know, so here's the next part. So today, I think you saw my email, I said, we want a new sink. You know, stop trying to give us things to fix this sink, just give us a new sink because you guys fish, I mean, I'm done. You guys got to be done, I'm done. I don't know what else to tell these people. They've had six months to fix this sink and get some parts and they, they can't do it. So we requested, I was on the phone with Bradley today with the rep saying, no more parts, just give me, just give me a new sink. So he was going to go back and give me an update on that, but we have put the request in for a new sink because I don't think, at this point in time, I have no confidence that they're going to be able to give us a part that's going to make this work. And then the last item, wasn't on the punch list, but it came up, was the tie-in of the HVAC controls back to the main system. IFS is working on that. It's supposed to be done next week, so hopefully that'll all be wrapped up. I think by the end of this month, outside of the sink issue and the ruts, you know, everything else is going to be, going to be worked out of those two items and, you know, the sink, I mean, I'll be honest with you, it's probably going to be a couple of months to get a new replacement sink. I don't think those things are going to sit on a shelf somewhere. Probably going to have to, you know, made, but we'll get it on order and get here as quickly as we can.
Is there at least one working sink?
One is working.
It's one sink?
One side is working, the other side's not working.
Okay. Can you bring in any kind of temporary sink to help with hand washing or something while we're waiting? Is that a... Can you bring in any kind of temporary sink to help with hand washing or something while we're waiting, is that a possibility?
It's, the problem with it is one unit.
Right.
You know, so you can't like just cut it in half.
Right, sure.
You know, so I don't know, I mean, what you can do to, and it is very frustrating, and trust me, I don't think Dawn's here, but I send my apologies to her, because again, it's just hard, we have no kids, and at this time of year, we'd be washing our hands, and it just takes longer than it should have to take.
Any other questions for Grant or Eric? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the progress on Grant, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, next item on the agenda is substitute services bid, Dr. Way, this is yours.
Yep, we had open bid process on February 1st, Thursday the 4th, I'm sorry, the 1st. We were lucky to get four groups that gave us bids. PennMac is our, is our substitute employment service vendor right now, and as you can see, we usually, or in the last couple of years, we've paid at the 28%. PennMac actually went down 1%, they went down to 27%. But if you can see in my memo, you know, in the last two years, we've been averaging about mid to upper 60s with the fill rate. Therefore, we would like to go with EdU Staff, we did some background checks on them, they are with one of our neighbors. Their fill rate has been in the 70s and even a little 80s the last couple of years, and so, if you remember on the climate survey, this is something that came up with our teachers, and so we feel the need to stay at the 28% and go with the new company, EdU Staff, and that's what our recommendation is.
So I had my questions in the board packet about the additional cost to the district, and I think you said that they were nominal, if I remember right?
So right now, we budgeted about $215,000 for substitute services, and so, like I said, we're at the 28 percentile. And so if we go down, you know, 1%, 1% of, is that 1,200 or something?
So, and then the other thing that Chris told me about this was with, going with EdU Staff, other districts around us use them, and one of the advantages that we're going to have is with Warren County R3, we have that four-day week. We should, now that they all work for EdU Staff, we should be able to get some additional fill rates on Monday.
So the best fill rate you've had was four or five years ago, when Troy, Warnton, and us, we're all with the same vendor, and so we're hoping to get some of that with EdU Staff.
And we'll just have to coach the current PennMac employees to apply for EdU Staff, because there's no cost behind it, actually.
And we're going to keep the frontline software, so everything's going to be the same on that end?
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the EdU Staff recommendation?
Yeah, one of my questions was, if you could just please explain why we would probably pay a 30% premium on this instead of bringing it back in-house to manage?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you've noticed the trend, most school districts, so when I was at Warnton, I think in 2005, we had in-house, and, and so I remember those days, but between an assistant principal and one or two secretaries, calling people, trying to fight with other buildings over preferred subs, it's difficult to make that happen, it's going to take a lot of man-hours to do that. Also, this, by going to a vendor, it allows us to keep some of our retired teachers working over the 550 hours, and so a lot of them do come back and sub for us, and so it allows them to sub more days for us and more hours without them losing their retirement. So those are some of the benefits as far as W2s, training, all that good stuff, that's what goes into that 28%.
For me, it's the being able to employ retirees immediately and not having a cap on it, that's the biggest, and we do get some of those, so that helps us.
Any other questions on the proposal for the substitute services bid? I need a motion to accept the EdU Staff bid for 24, 25 substitute services?
Second.
There's a motion and second, did you get who seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard 6-0. Okay, CSIP reports. Middle school, anybody have any questions on that one? West? High school? East? Special education? And the central office?
Two questions on central office. One, were we able to get the attendance rate buttoned up today?
Yeah, we were not, but, and Mr. Smith will be zooming in here at any minute now, because I know him and Andrea are working on this even this, this afternoon a little bit, but the complication there is AMI days that are still lagging, so we'll get those calculated, and if Mr. Smith doesn't have an update with us for us, and I don't believe he will, he'll definitely hit your board memo, and then of course, we'll be back up to speed in for our March board meeting.
And why would the AMI day still be lagging?
Yeah, Mr. Smith will sure can fill this perhaps better than I, but essentially, the, to get credit for the attendance, we've got to get the work from the students, and we don't always get that back timely. In fact, one of the questions that came up in nuts and bolts today was, the question was, what if we accept that as a late assignment? Would that still be counted as attendance? So, and at least we believe it would. So not only are we getting on the timeline from an AMI day that the, that the, that the teacher set, but also even late assignments beyond that.
Yeah, I personally struggle with that, but I'll wait for more information. And then, secondly, with the, the lagging month on the CSIP data, I understand why we moved to it, but with March being, you know, we're getting closer and closer to MAPS season or MAP testing, it'd be really nice to be able to see February, March status next month, if that's possible.
Okay, I'll, I'll communicate that to Mr. Smith, see if we can get that done.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, that was just a report, so there's no motion needed for that. Community engagement evaluation, who's presenting this?
I. I'll come up here, everyone, the camera. So I have the awesome honor, for those of you who don't, I mean, I'm working for, I am the district communications digital media specialist, and I have the awesome honor of being part of the community engagement program that's really directly evolved from the CSIP that was formed last year. So, the purpose of the program is to foster meaningful connections and collaborations between the school, its stakeholders, and the community at large. So some of the things that I do personally, I help others with surveys, whether that be the principals, or the master plan committees, stuff like that. I manage the social media among a few others in district, and some ghostwriting, so I create templates and help write some statements and write letters for some of our admin. I create flyers, some design what's eye-catching, keep our parents engaged through that, especially with our little kiddos at elementary schools. I manage our website, also with a few others in district. I work on emergency messaging if we ever need that, hopefully not, but it has come up a couple of times this year. I work directly with the Wildcat support organizations, being our parent teacher committee, athletic boosters, band boosters, our CPAC, FFA alumni, and I work on some board recaps for internal communications. So, one that derived directly from the CSIP is the CSIP goal number one for community engagement, is to improve the knowledge of culture and inclusivity efforts as measured by the annual parent climate survey. So this year, we didn't get to create our questions, they were pretty much directly from DSC, but two that directly related to community engagement on the parent climate survey was question 11, I receive information about the educational services available to my child at school. So this one had lower scores on the middle school and the high school surveys. So I've been working pretty hard on getting that information out to parents, paired with Mr. Brooks at the high school. We're working on a principals forum, educating parents like this is what's available, this is what's coming up. And then the middle school as well, as we go through some changes there, we're working on some communication. And then number 12, I am asked for input about school decisions. This was our second lowest ranking question, our lowest scoring question on the parent survey, district-wide. So we've been working to get parent input and stakeholder input all together through our committees, through our support organizations, and more surveys. I mean, really, our survey is what's going to reach the most people in the quickest amount of time, and it's giving us direct opinions on the issues at hand. So we're working on that. And then CSIP goal number two for community engagement was to increase stakeholder participation and engagement as measured annually by the number of participants in support organizations. Again, these are the athletic boosters, the band boosters, FFA alumni, parent teacher committee, and CPAC, so...
What does CPAC stand for, please?
The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. This derived from a countywide Spenn parent program, and so just to be a little bit more specialized for our Wright City parents, we had a parent take this off with Ms. Kelly Brooks and Mr. Berger, just wanting to come together, educate parents on what services are available, and to also kind of give advice and have a parent perspective, where we can sit down in a small group and be educated, also share some ways that we can improve our facilities and improve our instruction. So they meet quarterly right now, our athletic boosters this year have doubled attendance. We were at six study members and four of them being chair positions, and the other two being the athletic director and the secretary. So we've doubled this, so we have more parents in there. And band boosters have stayed pretty steadily, but both of these programs are kind of unique this year, because they're looking at overturning about three-fourths of their chairs. So we're looking at bringing in new leadership as the older leadership ages, ages out with their students. So we've been really hitting those two hard on getting parents involved, because they're directly related with a lot of the sports, the athletic boosters, and that's all sports, middle school and high school, and then band boosters, bands, if we have any of our parents here, they know how involved band is, and we need, we rely on those parents to get them to events and to help set up competitions and stuff like that. I have not made direct contact with FFA alumni this year, in the CSIP it says biannually, but I have not made contact, that is my goal this semester, to make contact with them, help them with their recruitment effort, and then, yes.
See Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
He's on the FFA alum.
Well, awesome.
And he'll get you all with Dave Redcamp, who's president.
All right, I will definitely take you up on that. And then this year, the Wright City Parent Teacher Committee is on a brand-new platform, we're working on starting that up again, so we have a group of about seven parents and three teachers that are very, very committed to bringing new opportunities to our students and to taking over events, some fundraising to help with things like fifth grade camp, and then, of course, the CPAC is new this year. So we have about four parents in attendance at the first meeting, and we're looking to increase that as well. And then we support, I, I support, the school supports, and we're recruiting people to support all of the awesome initiatives that each of these programs are coming up with. So the CPAC, starting brand-new, we're just trying to help them get off their feet, recruit some parents, really spread the word about what the program's about. Our favor project that you guys have partnered with the athletic boosters about, spreading knowledge about that. We've only sold about 20 favors, but advertisement's going to be rolling out about that. And then, of course, our parent teacher committee. And then my, third objective on my program evaluation, I had added in addition to the CSIP, it's to increase stakeholder participation via our social media efforts. Social media is in almost everyone's phone in their hand, they're seeing it all the time, so I think it's super important. So I included some growth insights, our district Facebook, we stayed steady at followers, but we have increased our reach and our content interaction. So our reach is how many people are actually seeing it, how many times is it coming across someone's screen? So we've increased that significantly, that's by shares, by comments, by likes, along with the interactions.
And I'm assuming, I'll go back to that, I'm assuming that's just Facebook, that's not Instagram and...
This is just Facebook, we do not have Instagram, we have Facebook, Twitter, no TikTok, we have Facebook and we have Twitter.
Okay, so those are, and that right there is Facebook, right?
Yes, this is Facebook, our yellow columns here are this year, our blue are last year's. Your left graph is going to be content interactions and then our reach. So we're reaching, this year we've almost reached 70,000 people.
So, let's talk about Instagram for a second. So what research is showing is people my age, and Chris's age, and stuff like that, were Facebook users. Then you get to the younger, people your age and, and a little older, they're Instagram users. So why wouldn't we have a presence on Instagram also?
So this year is, I'm taking it as a pilot year, I'm new into this position, especially with our CSIP being formed, I was looking at our goals there. So a lot of my efforts have been focused on our support organizations, and social media is of course consistent, but I wasn't looking at expanding it. I was looking at how many people are we truly reaching, what programs do we need to get rid of? Is it Twitter because we're not getting as many interactions and we're kind of wasting our efforts there? Or is it just really focusing on Facebook, because Facebook still has a wide age range of users? So we still have high schoolers using this, and their parents use this. So Facebook still has a lot of ground, especially because platforms are also exploring transformations like Twitter going to X, and so it's a, it's an ever-evolving market, but Facebook has, has stayed steady. So our PAT, I focused a lot of efforts on this with our Kami, with our, with our PAT coordinator Kami Williams. So we noticed that there were a lot of stay-at-home parents, there were a lot of Facebook-using moms, and we just weren't utilizing this platform to get information out. So we started doing that this year more consistently. So we have more than doubled our interactions and our reach on PAT, to reach our families that are not quite within our district, but they're coming up, and they're prospective students. And the next one is early childhood, the early childhood, we have tanked a little bit. I have not been in that building very much, I think this directly just shows my efforts on this, I think there's much room for improvement, and I definitely plan on improving that at, through the end of this school year, and especially next. East as well, we also noticed that in early childhood east, and what we're going to see in west, is that our flyer posts just don't get a lot of traction. And that's a lot of what we're posting out, we need to post more classroom things, so I've been trying to create a bank of photos so we can post those out consistently. West also, I, West did have a spike, they do a staff highlight, which gets a lot of their reach in content interactions, which is another focus of mine that I realized is a huge, huge reward for our staff members to be recognized and for our content interactions. Middle school stayed pretty consistent and steady, content interactions have increased, they're posting more classroom pictures, more pictures of students, and their reach has gone down a little bit, that means that they're not necessarily sharing the posts, but they're interacting with it. And then high school has also decreased, high school, I've noticed this year, we've posted way more flyers than we have posted student interaction content. Through all of these platforms, I am not the only one to post to them, we have many other hands in it, and I think it's just going to take coaching and planning of next year for what we're wanting out of our social media. These are our top performers, Ms. Amy Salvo was our second top performer, with 4,275 being reached, that's a lot of shares. Ms. Meadows was our top performer, she got 4,487 in reach, that's a lot of shares, a lot of comments, a lot of likes. And Mr. Jeff Smith, his retirement was at 3,880. And then, speaking of different platforms, Twitter, so I ran some quick numbers on our district Twitter and our athletics Twitter. There are building Twitter pages out there that our administrators haven't used since 2016, 2017, so I was just going to let them lie. So I try to keep up with our district Twitter, but we only have about 635 followers, a lot of those are, which are older graduates that most likely have deleted the platform since the transition to X, just talking to some other communicators in the field. And then it only gets about 218 average views, that is really, really low, and less than one average interaction. And then our athletic Twitter only has 929 followers, 150 average views, and less than one average interaction. So I know it's of importance to some community members to have the stats put out about games, but that's really not proven very effective. They don't really get interactions, and we're noticing that the people who like them are liking them days after it's given. So that just shows us that they're just not really being utilized. And then, thanks to Elizabeth, we did get a new website platform this year, so I can't compare to last year's, because our URL was changed to be more fitting of the pages and to be more cohesive, so I couldn't compare, but we do have, so far, from August to February, which is what all of these numbers are compiled of, we have 32,000 site visitors, which is a really, really good number. And we're also showing that 65% of people use mobile devices, so we're trying to keep everything mobile-friendly, pictures mobile-friendly, our... Pictures mobile-friendly, our website mobile-friendly, and about 33% login on the desktop, so, and .6 on the tablet. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, anybody, before I ask mine?
I do.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for all of this and for your work, and Elizabeth's before you, and gaining some traction on our media. I, as far as like the community engagement, as far, like that question on, I'm asked about decisions made at the school. I've said this a couple of times, so I'm gonna say it again to you. But whenever we have study groups or things that are going on, I just went through my text messages really quick. It doesn't seem like we get text messages about those opportunities for people to be engaged. And I just wonder if there would be a way through, you know, getting parent information on what they're interested in, if it's when it's time to sign up for athletics, or get your, you know, whatever done, or if they're interested in serving on study groups, or if they're interested in coming to board meetings. If we could get a list of folks who are interested in that information and use our texting platform more, just for quick communication, and just giving people more of an opportunity if, like, I'm terrible at social media, and keeping up with everything, I'm the person who's liking football scores three days later. But, like, I'm always looking at text messages, I just wanted to throw that out there that I would like to see more, if at all possible, engagement through that for especially those things that involve decision-making at the school.
Absolutely, and then we use Infinite Campus a lot to blast messages. So anytime you hear about a message blast, it's mainly coming through Infinite Campus. And we try to pick and choose what's going to email, what's going to text, because if everything's going to text, we don't want it to just become background noise. But I have been partnering with a lot of our administrators on creating a group and getting questions out of like, who's interested in what? I know East did this, the survey actually wasn't that effective, it was a flyer home for a Valentine's Day party that was proven to be effective. And we had over 30 volunteers over a paper versus a survey. So, I think it's also very valuable, and but yes, I think that's something we can definitely work on next year. Thank you for the idea.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Good job, Morgan.
Yeah, you're a rock star, Morgan, and you were really taking on this position and just done a great job in adding value at the district level communication, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I can't, I couldn't have done it without Elizabeth. Elizabeth created a really strong foundation, and I absolutely love my administrators I'm working with, so.
So very good on the evaluation. Can you go back and display it again, please? And go back to the question, we got the 2.6. Well, as if, as Bush said, the 2.6 out of 4, you know, you'll see it, it's near the front. I think it's that right there. So, okay, question 12, did I hear you say that our, that our remediation for that is more surveys? Is that what I heard you say, or what did I hear you say there for that?
No, well, yes, our, so our survey about the master plan, for example, the master plan was in the community spotlight. So in order to get the most input in one platform, it was via a survey. So that was on our website, it was mainly technology, via technology. So it was on our website, it went out via email to all of our parents, community members, could have accessed it through our website and through our social media. So, yes, surveys was a route, but it's also trying to question them whenever they come in to the back-to-school events of, how do you wanna be involved? How do you feel that your opinion is valued? Because it is, and we want you inside, we want your feedback on school decisions. But is that plugging into the parent teacher committee, is that plugging into a booster organization if you're more worried about athletic decisions?
So, so one of the complaints I got about that master plan survey was, you know, we hit, when, you know, we were talking about moving fifth grade up and doing that Monday morning, all that stuff was embedded within that survey. And with that stuff being embedded within that survey, parents didn't see it. So, so I wonder if that played into that, into that little number, because folks felt like, because they didn't take that particular survey, or go, they didn't get to participate?
So, this survey, specifically this annual parent climate survey was sent out in September, and the master plan survey didn't come out until December, November, I think it was November. So, I don't feel that this directly reflects that, I do believe that we got negative feedback from the master plan survey and people wanting their, I don't know, a better format of it, and I think that that's just the room for improvement. We can definitely learn from that.
I mean, the other thing I would wonder is, I mean, the question, I guess the balance is, if we take small, I mean, that survey was pretty long.
It was.
And so the question is, you know, by the time I was getting through it, I was getting kind of bored toward the end of it, or just hurrying through it or whatever. But, if you make them shorter, and like three or four or five questions max, and then, I don't know, I mean, you're the expert, but instead of having one long one, if I had four or five short ones, would that impacted that number? Or would it impact that number? Because, and then the other thing is, having paper copies of that survey available for people to, you know, you know, to do.
I think, yes, we can, it is, it was definitely a learning experience, I did not directly make that survey. That was a compilation, compilation of a lot of hands coming into that. But I also believe that it's really hard to spread the word that we're putting out a survey when our direct means of communication is technology and the people who would use paper. So I think it's just me, again, using this year as a pilot year, and just exploring the routes of how we're gonna reach the different crowds. Is it the newspaper, is it the radio?
So what would've happened if we had published that, if we had published the survey in the connection? Or something, I mean, obviously, that would've been too long for the connection.
There would've been a delay in the response.
Yeah.
So we were going on a quick timeline for our, the purpose of our study group. It's all just trial and error and reevaluating after this, so.
I mean, you did a great job, I just, that, that one stuck out to me, plus with the, how raw last month's meeting was with, you know, parents, you know, telling me, hey, I didn't get any input into that fifth grade decision, and so on and so forth, when in reality, they, the opportunity was there, but the fact that it was embedded in that master, that master survey. So, I, that's why it's so wrong to me right now in terms of...
I completely understand that.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thanks for answering my questions. Any other questions for Morgan?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna add on to what you said, awesome. I think, I think the surveys are great, and I know we did learn with this last one that we have to be really crisp and clear as far as the topic of the survey. But I do like that we can be transparent with the data that we get back and have that to point to. I know a few people made the comment that they're not on Facebook, I think we did email that one out, right? And include a link to the survey, so that's probably something always good to do with those. And then I just have one more comment, I think Erin might have mentioned this, that our study groups that we do, I think that's an area we could grow as far as our community engagement, and really looking at how we're, we're getting out the word on those, you know, the opportunity that's there, that it's available, and really looking at how we can engage more of our community and being involved in those. I just think there's a lot of good voices in our community that we can leverage for input in those opportunities that maybe we're missing out on right now.
Absolutely, and that is already in my goals for the following, this rest of the semester and next year, so, thank you guys.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a consent agenda, does anybody wanna pull anything? Is anybody related to anybody in the employment? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Okay, so we're not pulling anything from consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Remove.
Second.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard 6-0. I've asked Dr. Salvo to remain in the closed session so she can kind of get a feel about how it goes. So it'd be up to her whether she decides to stay or not. In accordance with 610, section 610, old 21, the Vice Statute of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will meet in closed session, discuss three, personnel and 13 individually identifiable personnel records. I need a motion to go into closed session? There's a motion and second, any more discussion? Both false, starting with Austin. Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, I have 720 on...